Hello, everyone.
Hey there.
Michael.
Like the artwork, Nathan.
Well, thank you. And my office has recently moved.
Where are you?
I'm just, I'm on the other side of the room. My, my wife made the, it's a finished area in the basement. And where I used to have my desk in front of the only two windows in the basement. And she made that side of it into a playroom, so.
Ah. So it begins.
That's right. So now this is like the, you know, by me as the couch where we normally sit and watch TV. And now I have my desk set up in front of it. So it's a little bit of a shuffle button.
Well, if we'll make you, I'll give you context. So since the pandemic started, I've been working out of my younger kid's bedroom. She has not lived in this house for six years since she went to college. But yet there's still her stuff here.
Oh, yeah.
At one point, it might become my office, but I'm, I'm baby steps.
That's right.
I just wanted to check my audio. Can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Yes, Jeff, we can hear you.
No, Jeff, you can change your name.
Yeah.
Up on top, there's the, the dots on top, if you want to.
This is my, this is, this is my wife's dear computer, and I'm hesitant to change anything on it.
It's only for Zoom. What, what should we zoom? It won't, it won't change anything else.
Okay, I can do that, or.
You don't have to. We know, we can recognize that you're not.
You know, I, I can actually change his name for him. I should put Jeff PB. What do you think?
Yeah.
Hello, everybody.
Hey there, Mary.
Hi, Mary.
So Nathan, are you also the meeting host? Is that?
Nathan and I, Jeff.
I am.
Good to see you.
You got two presences at once.
And it looks like Carrie's here. I was anticipating that. I got an email from Deacon asking me to host. He said Carrie wasn't gonna make it, but maybe I guess she's here, so.
Yeah, in the last meeting, I said I was bringing my laptop. I wasn't able to get much internet connection the first week I was on vacation, but now that I'm in a different area, I have better wifi.
Cool. Thank you for joining us from your vacation.
No problem.
You're anywhere nice?
Yeah, so the last week I was in Myrtle Beach and now I'm in Cornelius, North Carolina.
Is it, is it hot?
Yes, but I heard it's hotter over there.
Yeah.
It is one of the days. It's nice to be in Chutesbury. I heard, my wife told me it was 100 degrees in North Hampton today.
You healthy?
Yeah, I, in Westfield, I heard the past like week or so, it's from like over 100.
Woof. That's brutal.
I'm joining you from Monhegan Island in May.
Nice. What's the temperature there?
Uh, today in the seventies, we've got a nice sea breeze. It was hotter two days.
That sounds great. Yeah.
Evening, everybody.
Hi there.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't see you though, Deacon.
Oh, that's, that's better, but I'll fix it. Oh, there I am.
There you are.
Okay. I thought Carrie was on vacation.
She is.
I am.
Well, well, thank you for coming. I.
Yeah, no problem.
I, I asked Nathan to be, be hosting, expecting you to be absent.
No, this is, um, um, I am on my second part of my vacation. I went from Myrtle Beach to Cornelius because now with my aunt and my rest of, I'm waiting for the rest of the family to fly in tomorrow, so kind of a slow day today.
And this is a highlight for your vacation, right? Planning board meeting?
Looks like we're still shy one for a quorum.
Now we got, Steve's here.
Oh, we got more?
There's five of us.
Don't I count, Deacon? No, no, Steve, I'm sorry. It's. Well, why don't I, why don't I open the meeting? And we can ask for public comment and, and introduce ourselves to each other.
Quick, quick note that the meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. Thank you. That's good.
I'm here to help.
You were ready. You were ready. I, I. So is there anyone here who wants to talk about something off the agenda or needs to leave early? I'll, I'll just note, Deacon, is, do we have anything that might come in for unanticipated business at this time? Not that I know of. Okay. Um, then I might, since most of the agenda tonight is stuff that I won't be participating in voting or discussing. Um, I might. And fortunately, we have a quorum without my presence here, so. I mean, I think I'll listen in, but just.
The first part you can participate in.
First part is no problem, Nathan. No, yeah, but then I think the, there's like two or three agenda items that are the last part of the meeting that, yeah.
We'll let you off the hook.
Well, you can leave whenever you want.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, since I am practically now on vacation and not even in my own home, I, I would love it if we could move this thing along tonight.
Well, well, good. Let's try to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So Robert Gage has been in touch with me about property on Sand Hill Road. So I think we should move on to that. I sent out an email with a wetlands delineation report and, and sketch. So you, you may have seen that. So why don't we ask Robert Gage to, to speak for a minute about, about what he needs to find out?
Well, great. Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate the time tonight. I'll keep it brief. I know you're on vacation. Actually, I just, we just got back from mid coast Maine up in New Harbor. And the rest of my siblings are still up there, actually. So I'm going to be the only representative. But this is discussions about a parcel, parcel T eight, 12.6 acres on Sand Hill Road. It's a parcel that my parents set aside for the four of us siblings, separate from, and if you're familiar with the conservation area across the road. That was that they established over there, the Bob and Peg Gage area. So this is 12.6 acres. And we, we are, you know, we all grew up in the Amherst area. My sister still lives in Amherst, but none of us are really, none of us are going to, to, you know, ever, ever build there or anything. So we're interested in seeing what the possibilities are for developing the land. You know, in a responsible way. So we've had, as Deacon was saying, we've had kind of preliminary wetlands assessment done. We have a survey pending. I wanted to talk to all you guys before we actually ordered that. But we could have that done by the end of the month with the plan, the first week of September, through Eaton surveys, Eaton survey. Again, it's 12.6 acres. I think it's, I think it's around 1,200 feet of road frontage. But there's, if you've looked at the sketch, there's a lot of wetlands here. So I just wanted to pick, you know, we, we all, my siblings and I wanted to get your opinion on what might be best next steps for us. You know, in terms of developing that land in a way that makes sense for the community and us, you know.
So I guess I had one question for Deacon that I'll just throw out. Because it might make the meeting a little bit shorter, but I was a little confused why the planning board would deal with this. It seems like the first stop is the Concom since it's all wet ones. So I don't know if anyone on the planning board or Miriam, if you have any thoughts, but. And Rob Miriam Defat is the chair of the Concom, so.
Right. I've, I've touched base with, I think Penny, I've been communicating with the email with Penny, and she was very helpful. She sent me some documents. Which, you know, I mean, I was involved in environmental health at the local and county level for a number of years in Pennsylvania. And I can see it's no less complicated in Massachusetts, which is good. It's all a good thing. But yeah, but we've, we've, we've made some preliminary contacts with the, with the Conservation Commission, but nothing beyond that.
Penny's not on the Conservation Commission any longer, so you know, maybe you and I should have a conversation.
Just sure.
Chairman, I, I could run through several development options, although I don't think it, it's our place to indicate preferred options or, or, you know, what, what we might like or anything else. It gets, it gets up to them to figure out how they want to approach it.
I think that's a great idea, Jeff.
You want me to share the screen with your sketch? Would that be helpful?
Um, but I, 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 I pretty much know what the sketch looks like. So if you've got 12 acres, and you've got 1,200 feet of frontage, town requires 250 feet of frontage per lot for a single family dwelling. If that's what you're interested in, the single family dwellings, you could also build a multifamily dwelling on that property because you've got quite a bit of frontage. So you could apply the frontage and you could probably build a four family house on that property with that frontage. Or a couple of duplexes even. So there's a number of options if you've got the frontage. Acreage wise, you need two plus acres per dwelling for a single family. So you could potentially get five, perhaps on, on 12 acres. Yeah, five. So you know, there is the standard way, the A and R way of, of cutting off frontage lots. You know, of course, you'd have to dance around the wetlands because you'd be putting in driveways and building houses on those lots, and they'd be new lots, so there wouldn't be any exemptions attached to them. So you'd have to fully comply with the, with the wetland regulations, both state and local. Another way to do it would be to use shared driveways, which would, we have shared driveway provisions in our zoning bylaw, and that way you wouldn't have to put in so many driveways and potentially you could avoid wetlands, stay away from them, and then still service the lots with the shared driveways. And the final, the final way would be to look at Article Five in our zoning bylaw, which is the open space design. I'm not sure how that would play out for you. 12 acres that might get you two or might get you two or three units, and then you'd have to preserve most of the, most of the land that you're not using for houses.
Right.
But that's Article Five. It's essentially a cluster, cluster plus type, type thing. And if you're interested in that, I could send you the worksheet. There, there is a one-page worksheet where you can, you know, figure out how many house lots you could get, how much land you have to preserve, based on site characteristics.
Sure.
So, so those are sort of the, the options for you.
Okay. I mean, one of the kind of baseline things we want to make sure is that, does it make sense for us to invest in having the survey done? As, as when this communication with Deacon, it's not a cheap process. And if you guys were to say, look, this is a no, this is a non-starter, then, but if you think there's areas for this, this, this possible options to move ahead, then, then we'll do that. You know, I think, as I said to Deacon, we don't want to make this Levittown in Chutesbury. You know, we don't, you know, we, we just want, we're just, we're just in the information gathering phase right now. So, but I appreciate that. Those are, if you want to, if you could send whatever information you have, that would be great. Just, just as a starting point for us. And I think I should, I clearly follow Miriam and have some more discussion or discussions about, you know, what's, what are the best next steps for us?
Yeah. I, I would suggest that you get with either a planner, professional planner, or a landscape architect.
Right.
Lawyers are, are, are pretty expensive, but a landscape architect could probably figure things out pretty well. You know, to try to, to try to match what you and your siblings are interested in with our regulations.
Yeah.
So that's what I would recommend. And if, if you hired a landscape architect and that person wished to call me up sometime and interrogate me about these rights, I'd be happy to talk to them.
Okay. And, and I, maybe in my discussions with Mary, when you guys, I know you can't recommend anybody, but maybe there's a list of people that you would work with again, without recommending anybody, that would be helpful. If that's possible, but I'll follow up with me, would, would following up with Miriam be a next good step?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Here, do you want to add something? Your hand's up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and, and it's Rob, right?
Yeah.
Yep. That, given these wetlands, I'm trying to imagine where, where you'd carve out building lots and septic systems and having the engineered site plan is going to be really important down the road. So it's not money wasted. Because it's going to, it'll be necessary in order to figure out what's jurisdictional.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, here in Pennsylvania, I worked, I was director of environmental health, we're county health department and director for 10 years. And so here in Pennsylvania is Act 537 in terms of on-site sewage. And I know it's, it's complicated. It can be complicated depending on the soils and the, you know, all the other stuff. So I appreciate that. I can readily, really appreciate all that. Certainly don't want to make any problems. You know, we don't want to create any problems up there. So.
Do you know what percentage of the, of the property is wetland?
I, only based on the sketch here, it looks like, I mean, to me, it looks like the only, just intuitively, the only parts that could be developed would be the north, the west and northwest part of the property, and the central part of the property, maybe, I don't know. And maybe there could be some kind of clustered development there, and the rest could be preserved. I, I don't know. But we will, based on this conversation, I'm gonna initiate the survey, so hopefully we'll have that, that survey planned by the first week of September. And I'll talk to me, I'll talk to Miriam between now and then. And I think your idea of talking to a, you know, a environmental planner, or, you know, a a designer.
Yeah, a land use planner, or, or a landscape architect.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there, there are zoning lawyers around. But we're gonna pay a lot more for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think at this point, we're more interested in just getting some concrete options in terms of any all the, all the kind of legal details. That's something we will pursue as we get farther down the road, maybe, so. But I really appreciate your guys' time tonight. You know, whatever, whatever information you need, we'll be happy to provide as we move forward. You know, whatever we can do to, to, you know, keep in touch with you guys, we'll definitely do that. So.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And, and now my siblings get involved, so. It's fine. We're, we're all on the same page, but yeah. And we were, we all grew up in Amherst, so we all care about the area. You know, we spent many, many, many weekends and hours up at that land as kids. So anyway, but thank you, guys. We appreciate your, I appreciate your time today. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night.
Right.
Okay, great. So my take is we're not prepared to talk about any minutes at this point, and we should pass over that. Do we know anything about Wheelock Site Visit?
Um, I tried to leave a message with, with him, but his, his box was full. So I, I went to the next option, which was to email, but I've not had a response yet.
Okay.
So I, I will stay on it. Anybody from Pratt Corner Road seen any activity in and out of there?
Um, with only, not on that, but I actually saw, I don't know, Mary, if you saw this, this is humongous roll of it's not wire. It's a huge fat thing. I'm assuming it's the three-phase that they're gonna wire Pratt Corner with at the top of the hill. So it looks like, although no one's told, told us anything, I haven't heard it officially. I'm guessing that the three-phase wiring that Amp had to commit to National Grid to is about to begin.
Yeah. That's, I'm sure that's what that was.
But I'll, I'll continue, I'll continue pursuing them. And, you know, if, if it goes on much longer, we might want to think of a, a shot over the bow, which would be a letter from the building inspector mentioning the possibility of revoking the special permit.
Yeah, I, I would support that. I mean, I remember we brought this up, well, only because we brought it up and said, well, we want to do it after the winter, so April, May. And, you know, so the spring came and gone, you know, it's not going to happen before the end of summer. So before we get into, you know, fall and, you know, it could easily go a few more months. So I think trying to speed it up would be good.
Well, there is a condition in there that things shall be maintained in good order. There's also the, the way the basin was, was presented was as a retention basin. So, you know, there, there are things that could be viewed as violations that are not being corrected. So, you know, that's something for us to consider in the fall. If we, we're not getting anywhere.
Well, thank you for your perseverance on this.
Yeah, yes. So does anybody want to deal with this issue anymore before we go on to the solar bylaw? We done with this one? Let's move on.
Okay, so Deacon, should I kick this off?
Please, please.
So I, I just sort of framed things and suggest how I think it might make sense. So I sent everybody a few documents in the last couple of days. There was, on Friday, I sent out the almost updated version, and then I think on Sunday, after communicating with Jeff, there was a small tweak, so I sent another version. So the most updated version is the August 7th version. I tried to highlight a couple of discussion points that I think we should review. Just for sort of the context, after our last meeting, I made a whole bunch of edits based upon that discussion. And then a few weeks later, Jeff sent me a bunch of edits that he had collected. And made it, it's based on that. And then uh, Friday, somewhere at the end of last week, Jeff and Donna and I spoke, and we went over the whole thing. And I made changes according to that, and that's what the August 5th version was. So I think what, I'll just pull up just to share, to give you guys a visual. Can everybody see that? So.
Okay.
Make it worse. How's that? Okay.
Keep going. Keep going.
Hold on.
You can make it bigger on your screen, Jeff.
How's that?
That's too big.
It's too big. Okay.
What's wrong with it? Too big? How can it be too big?
No, that's good. Right there.
Okay, cool. Okay. So what I thought we could do is jump into the, where I think the two discussions are, and then once you've had those discussions, we could sort of circle back to questions that people had about other things. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So both of these discussion points are about the land use and acreage, and sort of the common things. Let me just get to, so I'm gonna not go in order. The first one that we discussed last time, and has been a topic of conversation, is the protected land where we were currently saying that they couldn't develop. So it was the critical natural landscapes. It's the section under Habitat. So the change between Friday and Sunday was something that Donna and Jeff and I talked about, and then Jeff had another suggestion. So I'm actually going to stop sharing for a second and share another one because it's a little bit easier to discuss that. Let's see. Share. Can you guys see that? Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the first version, option one. It keeps the original protections, but adds an option for a waiver with cause. So currently. This is what it is currently on the bottom. It says installation shall not be located on land. With priority habitat. Critical natural landscape and core habitat. So right now, we're saying they can't be built.
Michael, let me ask you just a question, because I I I forget, did you add any categories of stuff? Above and beyond what is in the bylaw now, any other types of category?
I didn't, I, the terminology, the terminology changed from like two thousand sixteen to what it is now. And so I clarified, but for these two things, there's only. There's no, there's no priority habitat, there's core habitat. And there's a critical natural landscape. Those are sort of the two big buckets for. This this biomap stuff, so when those those two have remained the same.
Okay, but but aren't in the bylaw itself, not not right in front of us here, aren't there other types of things that are listed?
Yeah, let me, let me go there now, just because it's a little hard to.
And my question is, have those been added to, or are we still talking?
Yeah.
Same list?
Yeah, I got it. So. The habitat retentional statewide importance, that's new, that's. Part of the D E P ecological integrity maps. And then the priority habitat is the same as before, that just got clarified. So the only thing that got added is this habitat for potential regional and statewide importance by D E P. So I don't believe that one existed when we were doing it last time. So I can go, I I'd have to go look at the history of where I found it, but. Can we hold that for a second, Jeff? But I think it's 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 a reasonable question. So sharing that other one. Okay, so the alternatives, there's two two different ways to go. In terms of this critical natural landscapes, Robert, is that too big?
Oh, that's good, thank you.
Okay, so. Last meeting, Ashley made a suggestion, she said, you know, so the premise is. Jeff had raised the issue that after Tracer Lane and the S J C decision. Waltham got criticized because it only allowed solar development in one to two percent of the of the city. And so the issue was, where where's that for Schutzbury? You know, we don't want to sort of approach that same thing if Waltham got criticized for that and we looks similar. We could get whacked for it just in the same way. So that was, that's the starting point for where Jeff's concerns were. There was a couple of points got raised, one is that Waltham and Schutzbury are not the same, so Donna pointed out that. You know, we do have woods and Waltham doesn't, so if we feel like they need to be protected, and if the state thinks that they should be protected. It's not that we shouldn't, but we should just be cognizant of that and put a rationale in front of. You know, whoever is reviewing this for the bylaw, so that was sort of the background. Last meeting, Ashley made a suggestion that said, if if we have to allow. In the critical natural landscape, which is the larger of the protected area. Maybe we can have a higher bar for that development, so. We don't say they can't do it, we say they can do it, but you have to have some higher bar when you do that, so. I thought I thought that was a reasonable thing, I tried to think about it. What I came up with was. Because the idea is protecting the land, if they were to develop within a critical natural landscape. Instead of being limited to fifteen acres, they'd be limited to ten acres. You know, so the idea is we want to limit as much critical natural landscape land as gets developed, so. If you're not, if you're not developing in a in a critical natural landscape, you go up to fifteen. But if you're doing it in this protected area, it would be limited to ten, so that was. Option one, that was chronologically the first one. And then subsequent to that. I shared with Jeff. And I shared with everybody else earlier today, in the smart regs. It actually, as of July two thousand twenty. If a solar installation. Gets cited in both core habitat or critical natural landscape. The project can't get a smart subsidy, so the state and D O E R in particular are saying. We want to protect these areas, and we're not going to give you a subsidy if you build in those areas, so. It's very clear, even in the context of solar, that those should be protected. So on Sunday, I guess it was yesterday. Jeff came up with. Suggested language, which sort of brought us back to where we were, which it said. You can't develop in those two areas, in the biomap to critical natural landscape or core habitat. Unless there's a waiver for cause, and. I don't fully understand the cause part, and Jeff can explain it, but it seemed like having cause is not just a general waiver, like there has to be a little bit more oomph behind it. So those are the two things that ended up being on the table that I think we should sort of discuss. Jeff, how do I do for a summary on that?
That's good, that's good. I I I mean, I'm, I I will say, I I'm of mixed. I was feeling one way until you reminded me about the D O E Rs. Kind of rejection of of those areas for for the subsidy programs. And. Then I became a lot more interested in just keeping what we've got. Because I felt that it. It it was justified by the state and by the same agency that runs the smart program. My my worry is that. When you map out all these areas that that are listed. And say that you can't do a solar farm on. On these areas. Yeah, unless you have a waiver. It it's just not gonna leave any place. Any place to do them, and. I'm I'm worried that some lawyer could liken Tracer Lane, Tracer Lane was was really a facial challenge. That there was no application. It was a facial challenge to Waltham's regs, and that. Some lawyer could facially challenge ours and say, look. You you can't do it anywhere, they pushed them all off the off the roads, way off the roads, and they pushed them into all these protected lands, and then they say you can't do them in the protected land, so it's. Like a catch twenty two. And the implication being, maybe we should allow them near the roads, which are the only places that aren't protected. So, you know, that that's my general words. That. That we could be challenged that way. And that's. That's why I suggested we make it clear. In in this section, it's the only place in the whole bylaw that I I think mentioning the waiver is probably a good idea. Waiver for cause, so it's not. It's not an irrevocable prohibition, you have some recourse to to. To try to convince the planning board that it's not necessary to prohibit it in that particular area of, say. Critical natural landscape, so. I think I would be comfortable leaving all the language that we've got. But putting that phrase up front.
Jeff, Jeff, can you give an example? Of a waiver with cause, what that might be?
You you get into a block of land and where the. Solar proposal is 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 quite unremarkable, there really are no. Outstanding resources there, you know, the critical natural landscape are huge polygons, you know, thousands of acres.
He froze, right?
Yeah, he froze.
Okay. Well, in his, in the gap, I'd say the thing I'm curious about, oh, he's back.
Yeah, he's back. You froze, you froze for about ten seconds.
Oh, okay, well, I was doing pretty good there, dang. No, it it's just that. That the the polygons are so large in the critical natural landscape that. Not all this land is gonna be the same, some of it might be very ordinary, not have much in the way of water resources or interesting plants or historical features or. Or or anything else, and. You know, maybe, maybe that's cause to for us not to protect that particular area as stridently as we protect other areas.
So Jeff, I have a, I have a question, Jeff. I mean, when I think about. For cause in different contexts, like in an organizational context, like you can fire someone for cause, but you can't do it just because you don't like them. You know, they have to have stolen or not shown up or broken some policy, you know, so it's a higher bar. And so my interpretation was. A waiver for cause would be, not that they just designed it in a critical natural landscape area. But there was some fundamental reason why they had to put it there, otherwise everything would fall apart. And is that a misinterpretation?
Well, that would be hardship. Probably the the zoning term there would be hardship. So, I mean, we could introduce the idea of hardship if you wanted to.
So. Robert, this, I have two questions. One. The waiver for cause under section tense eight, ten, six C exists whether you say it or not, correct?
Yes.
So, one, why say it at all? My second question is. If you're gonna bother to say it. Why not give some type of definition or examples of for cause, so it's not a total baloney concept?
Yeah, normally I would not say it, because the waiver applies to any provision in eight point ten. But I felt here. This is where, this is where, to me, in in view of Tracer Lane, our bylaw is weak, because we've ruled out so much land. So I felt drawing attention to the waiver here would. Would be the only place where that would be. That would be warranted.
It becomes confusing because. The question rises, why do you bother to do it here and? And not bother to do it in any other aspect of the bylaws?
Well, again, it's to me, that's the soft spot of this bylaw. And. And the way out of the, and and the way out of the soft spot is that we do offer a waiver.
So it's just putting it out in front, basically.
Yes. And 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 some lawyer who's who's trying to to think of a of a good facial challenge to this bylaw. Might read that waiver. Provision there, and perhaps we could. Write it a little liberally and say, wait a minute, I. You know, facial challenge might not be in order here, because they're putting the waiver right out. And I might have to go through the application process and be denied a waiver before I before I appeal, and that's. That's what we want them to do, we we're a facial challenge.
Uh huh, that makes sense.
So would it be correct, based, listening to what Robert said, and Jeff, I totally, I'm supportive of what you're saying, given the softness of it. If we wordsmith the four cause parts to make it a little bit crisper, that might help.
Yep.
What is, what is the, what is the? Prepositional phrase for cause actually mean in this, in this section, is that even, is that necessary?
That's the rub.
Well, there there are standards in eight point ten dash six C already. There are waiver standards, there's two, and you have to meet both of them. We could say something about. You know, for for cause to me would be that the land proposed for the solar facility is unexceptional. Unexceptional land. Not necessarily the finest example of a critical natural landscape or a core habitat or anything else, it's just. It it or it's been compromised, or it's been, you know, logged over, and, you know. There's just something about it that that. Causes us not to feel that it merits the protection, the rest of that category does.
Yeah, so so basically, Jeff, this gives the planning board a little bit of a back door or wiggle room. In case a lawyer comes forth and says. You can't do this. You know, because of, you you know, the restrictions you're making, you're unreasonably regulating solar. And without this waiver with cause, and it is waiver with cause, is that correct?
Well, for cause.
Oh, I can't see it, can you, Michael, can you move the thing down just a bit?
Sure.
The page, there you go, where, so it appears has been as option for waiver with cause.
Ah, sorry.
Okay. So I think I understand.
Anymore.
Attaching it to specifically to see, and I think that does make sense to me.
I I I support it as well, I think the only thing I would point out is that. Given the vagueness, not only does it give the. Planning board sort of some wiggle room, but it also potentially could. Give the developer sort of free rein to just sort of go forward. But I don't know if that's a correct read, is there, like Jeff, you were saying, I mean. They'd have to. Apply and make an argument as for why they would want a waiver?
Right, and and we may want to put something in there that would indicate what we're thinking here. Above and beyond the standards that are already there.
You mean, you mean, for example?
For example, an area.
Yeah.
An an area of core habitat that. Really does not have habitat characteristics. That that are much different than anywhere else in town. And they could demonstrate that, and and the wildlife biologist consultant that we hired would confirm that, perhaps, or not.
Right, and I think that's fine, I just don't think to bend over backwards to defy, you know, to go. Give them lots of ideas, let's just say. I think one example is perfectly a good idea.
We have done this other places in the bylaw someplace, but we actually put in parentheses, for example, full colon. And then we we kind of give an example, like one example, just. Just to illustrate.
Can I say something over here?
Please.
Would it be for cause if they say, well, we've surveyed all the land in Schutzbury, and this is the only section that works? Is that for cause?
That that would be more like hardship.
Could we do it for hardship instead of cause?
Well, if we say they can, they can, otherwise it's whatever six C says. Or whatever we we put here, if we wanted to, if we wanted to open up. The the waiver, the hardship considerations, we we could do it right here for this particular. For for these particular restrictions only.
Yeah. Well, this is Robert. The, there's not a general provision that the. Planning board can have waivers in cases of hardship?
No, that's, that's zoning board of appeals variance standards, and those are for hardship.
So. Discussion is with regard to cause.
So actually, we we everyone should be aware that they could still go to the zoning board of the field. And and try for a variance based on hardship. To, so if the waiver didn't work for them, they they could ask for a zoning variance. That is another avenue open to a solar developer.
That would, and that would still, and that would not be a facial challenge, that would be after an application?
Yeah, after after you tried for it and didn't get it.
Yeah.
See, Jeff, what's, I'm sorry.
But but to me, that's what I want, I. I want the facial challenge to look. To look shaky and for them to think, the only way we're gonna challenge this is to go and propose something and actually be denied. Because then we get to work with them and, you know, kind of gauge what's going on and what our chances are of prevailing and. You know, if we have to give or not give, or I I'd much rather be in that situation. Than having to just defend this thing on its face.
So in terms of writing, I guess, let me just check out, it seems like. The board likes this option one as opposed to what was in the previous Friday version about limiting the acreage. And if we do like this option, it seems like we can. Put that in and maybe just wordsmith it a little bit and see how people feel. Put that in and maybe just wordsmith it a little bit and see how people feel, but. Is it is it correct read that people are going forward with the rationale that Jeff's putting forward? And we could just make sure that it works, you know, as crisply as we want it to?
I I mean, not to fully, not to discount the other option, but if someone were to come in and say, well. You know, due to where it's being located, it's going to be smaller than the maximum. It's going to be 10 acres rather than 15 total. That could be something that we would consider. As a possible grounds for a labor.
I have a question. Are the are the 2020 smart regulations still? I mean, have they been? Have has that situation changed since 2020?
No, they're the final right. There were draft ones in July 2020 were the ones that were finalized, so those are the most current ones.
And nothing newer?
No.
Okay.
You know, and the legislature talked about having a. Another iteration of smart, but nothing got put in statute with the climate bill. So I wouldn't assume anything's going to happen for another couple of years at least.
Yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
Is it too much or not appropriate to have a combination of both? Have a combination of. Needing the needing the waiver and. Then if the land is in the sea and. Then it will also be limited to 10 acres. Is that too much to do to? Combine both?
Well, that that could be a part of what we approve. You know, we may not want to approve anything more than. Eight or 10 acres.
But we want to put it in the bylaw. Can we? You think that's too much, Jeff?
I I let me let me jump in and I I'd say. There's no need to be that specific if we've got the waiver for cause. We can define that we can when it comes before the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay.
And why why bake it into the? Why bake it into our zoning bylaws if we if we have a little bit more. When a case comes before us?
Could I speak up for that?
Yeah, of course.
The possible advantage is if we don't have a particular quorum and if. Someone brings it into the planning board without the quorum, then this is already there. Without us needing to. Limit it or say anything.
I. I don't think we should. Write our regulations based on assumptions that we aren't going to have a forum.
Okay.
Well, how about? It seems like we're gravitating towards option one, but it's not ready, it's not. 100% done yet. Is that a is that a correct statement?
Yeah, Michael, why don't you wordsmith a little bit more? One word. You may add is demonstrated cause. And. I think that ups ups the game a little bit for them. They. Yeah.
So it's not a hypothetical thing?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I think and not to take your job away, but I see there's at least one one hand before I move off of this topic. I don't know if you want to.
Well, I'll call on the hand. It seems to be a picture of. Of a plant.
Hi, it's me. This is Sharon Waisenbaum. I have a question which is. I'm wondering about the language like you you were talking about. Cause and if land has been is already sort of degraded and a worry. That I have is that. You know, looking at the long term, what if land gets degraded? And then. There's like a claim that, oh, well, it's degraded. You know, so a lot of logging goes on in that land and so now it becomes degraded. And then there's a claim that it's already degraded and I'm wondering. About having some kind of language. That looks at the land how it is now. So that there isn't that possibility of degrading it and then. Saying, look, it's already degraded. I don't know if that's a concern. But I just wanted to put that comment in.
I think we'd see through that.
So Jeff, again?
I I think we would see through that.
Okay. Yeah, and I think Sharon, thank you for that comment. I mean, I I think just moving us to the. Conversation, I'll I'll wordsmith this. I put in demonstrated, I I think I can. You know, if there if it if there's a way of incorporating the concept Sharon is including, but. How about for this part, I'll bring it back next meeting to people and we can discuss it. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to just go back to the. Full version because there's one more. Section, let's see, and it's. And this is this is it's equal about it's also about acreage. And can you guys see this part? Okay, so the background here. Is that since the the first version of the bylaw, you know, in 2015, 16. Large scale solar has always been defined, oops, there we go, I made it too big. There we go. It's always been defined as. More than one and a half acres, but no greater than 15 acres. What Jeff and I. Ended up deciding was. Although it's still will still be in the definitions, which is in the back of the the entire zoning bylaw. Putting it, including it in the solar bylaw, so it's clear in the dimensional. And then we had a conversation just last week. That the technology is getting more efficient. So presumably as it gets more efficient. You could like Wheelock is six megawatts. So conceivably, you could. Produce six megawatts and require less than 15 acres. So Jeff threw out this idea of. Rather than put in. A ceiling of acreage because that seems to be what the SJC is focused on. One could we could write it in that it's about how much electricity could be generated. And over time, if it gets more efficient. You know, the ceiling could drop from 15 acres to 12 to 10, whatever. So that was the original idea. I threw out sort of a mix. As this sort of. Option in brackets here, which is. Putting in both where you could have 16 megawatts. Or no greater than 15 acres. And then it sort of I thought, well. On one hand, you could say whichever is less, which would drive it to be smaller. Or you could say or greater, which could drive it to be bigger. I don't think there's a situation where they generate six megawatts and it'd be more than 15 acres. But. Putting that on the table, we can either keep it just at 15 acres the way we have, or we can entertain some permutation of these concepts. So again, Jeff, did I capture that history well?
Yeah, I mean. My worry and and my worry was lessened a little bit by Donna, who said a number of towns have. Standards of of 10 acres or 12 acres or 15 acres, so I'm I'm less worried. But I mean, my worry is is always that that the thing gets challenged. Challenged based on, you know, the bylaw makes the the solar projects uneconomic. I know the state smart program will provide incentives and. Whatever they do to support these projects up to six megawatts. And. Six megawatts is the size of Wheelock. It's around, it takes around. 30 acres supporting the current technology to do six megawatts. So. Anyway, I I I don't feel as strongly. That that's going to be a problem. I mean, if you look at the tracer lane case, the the solar farm in Lexington that was that was the subject of this is only nine acres. So. I'm not so worried about the 15 anymore. So I I would say if we did something like this, it the language should be whichever is less.
Robert, I'm not sure why we do anything but acreage. Seems like it's gets caught. Why why are we concerned with generating? How efficient the the. Person generating the solar power is, isn't that their business?
Can I speak to that, please?
Please.
Thanks. The the issue with acreage is that it might be possible or advantageous to the people putting in the solar plants or solar energy panels. To choose different five acre parcels. That in fact would disrupt much more than the 15 acres. So. I I would even offer something like 15 contiguous acres rather than have the possibility of. Of disturbing. You know, disturbing the habitat more by actually separating the 15 acres into smaller. Units, so that's why I think acreage should be in there and just not six megawatts because six six megawatts. Could be economically viable to, if you select several different areas that are flat. And that would destroy much more of the natural habitat.
So so I I will point out. Jeff, that. Our bylaw allows one large scale. In each of what is I think eight blocks of of land.
Okay.
That's all you can do. So if you put in a five. That would meet the definition of large scale and that would be the end of it in that block. All you could do.
Okay.
So you 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 couldn't get a five. Here and 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 a five somewhere else in that block and another five. Once you did, once the planning board approved the five anywhere in that block, that's the end of it for that block.
I thank you for that clarification, Jeff.
But but Jeff. Even if we're allowed, you're we're allowing only one. Solar. Installation in each of the solar districts, each of the eight solar districts. If somebody, if the technology. Advanced to the point. Where five acres is sufficient for six megawatts. You're you're confident that we could still. Allow one only one of those in each of our districts, solar districts.
If it met the definition of large scale, there's just one.
Okay. Okay.
I think, you know, listen, I'm sorry, anyone else want to talk before I drop in?
And and I I just just an opinion. I I I don't, I I don't think there'll be any of these proposed less than 15 acres.
Although although I would say that that when. When Evan Turner came around, they were they were proposing at least one of them to be real small. I mean, the one behind Penny Kim and April Stein, they were they were talking about doing. Doing, I think it was two and a half megawatts. I mean, I was I was surprised that they would even consider that. I was thinking that wasn't even economic.
Well, that would be the end of it for that block.
Yeah, yeah.
On the western side of Montague Road. I mean, another way to think of this, and this is. Is. And this potentially could liberalize the bylaw, maybe make it. A little more amenable to tracer lane. Is say up to 15 acres total. In each of the blocks. Now that would allow for. Three, five, a five and a 10 or 115 or. Whatever. But as Jeff said, that could be more disruptive because each one of those would have. You know, an access road and be a big. Chunk out of the forest, so. But that's another way to look at it. And that would liberalize the bylaw a little bit.
I'm sort of. You know.
Could I make a comment?
Please.
I just want to throw it out here before we move on and I forget my train of thought. So I had a couple of thoughts about this. One was. I could envision. Some designs where. Having it more decentralized would be better. Environmentally, particularly if you were carving. The site out around wetlands or slopes. And a good example of that, for example, is with Wheelock. Where, you know, there's a buffer strip going through the bit. Because for slope protection, but even with wetlands, sometimes having a very irregular, maybe even not contiguous. Layout might. Lessens some environmental impact if it allowed, for example, some isolated wetlands to have. Some corridor, some habitat corridor connectivity with with other wetlands. So that was just a thought and the other. Thought I had is that if. Some of these revisions are an effort to tie it more closely to the language. In the Dover amendment around well, safety, health and welfare. I don't see where. The. Electricity output. You know, kind of on its face. Ties into that is as clearly as acreage. Which has to do with environmental protection, so. That just might, it just seems like a bigger stretch to me.
Yeah. And so what I was going to say is, and thanks, Miriam, because I hadn't thought about that. When Robert hits it earlier, you know, it it seems like. Let's not worry about. Their electric generation, like they can do whatever they want in terms of efficiencies and design and stuff. It's really sort of about the footprint of the project. You know, and at the very beginning, to Miriam's point. The whole background piece that we added that ties to public health, welfare and safety. You know, is about the vibrance of the of the forests and the water issues. And just. All the things it it the acreage does lean into that. So I guess I'm I'm more convinced that we should maybe, Jeff, if you don't feel strongly. And I agree, there's a lot of towns that have, you know. 10 acres or 15 acre limits, we just leave it the way it is.
Well. I have one thought. I'm sorry. Is it? Can we? Can we by limiting by limiting the acreage, can can we just can we? It seems to me that we can, by limiting the acreage, we can, we can create an incentive for a developer. To use. Perhaps more expensive, but more efficient. Panels. Can we do that? I mean. I mean. If they come in with a proposal that that assumes cheap panels, can we say, can we require that they that in order to reduce the? The acreage, they they use more expensive panels?
Well, that would be the. That that would be the the economics of it, yeah. Get as much megawattage out of your 15 acres. As possible and as as much state benefit as possible because that's by the megawatt. So, yes.
And based based on the tracer case, I don't think we should be trying to. Decrease the acreage anymore. Than we have.
Correct.
As a percentage of Schutzbury's overall. Acreage.
Agreed.
So. What it? Where's? I just got confused. Where where is that heading based on Deacon's comment?
Michael, I I think it's heading, just leave it alone for now.
Oh, okay.
That's what I think everyone's saying, just.
Okay. That sounds cool. So those were I those are the two big. Things, let me, did anything jump out at other people that you want to zoom in on and talk about? Or I can just quickly cruise through the blue stuff and just sort of give you a. A heads up about what's new from the last time we discussed and then. Without making a full night of it, just sort of go through real quickly.
You didn't take out whichever is less when you took out the material.
I'll deal with it. I. I will not, I will not lose that.
Yeah, I I have to say, I appreciate what's the the new stuff in blue. That establishes a good baseline of of. You know, public welfare, safety and health.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, the the timing of this new report was really advantageous in that regard.
Yeah, I I mean, it really. It gives us a really solid, I think, a really solid foundation for the rest of the or some, you know, some of our. Our zoning, our solar zoning items here on the list.
Cool. So just in the. Be respectful of all your guys' time, this this blue part here is what Steve was talking about. So it's just the preface about the the clean. Um, so it's just the preface about the the clean energy plan um and citing why the state thinks it's important. So that's upfront. Um, and again, here at the beginning.
I had a question. Never mind.
I'll, I'll. You sure, Deacon?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
You're the chair, you get to ask questions too.
I know.
Yeah. So, I I I did have one thing I I recalled. And that's in the hydro, um, you know, the um, hydro geology part. I.
At the end.
Yeah, I I think you should still a a call it a hydrogeologist, even though they're not licensed in Massachusetts.
Really?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
The the term you used um could, could mean somebody who deals with pipes and uh public water supplies or um, but not, I, you you want somebody with a knowledge of the uh, of what's going on under the surface. And and that would be a hydrogeologist.
So, but just not, but not a licensed one, because they can't be licensed, but they can be trained in that field.
Right, and you know, there there's lots of hydrogeologists around. Um, but you you just can't get a, a, you just can't be licensed in Massachusetts. And then there's no provision for licensure.
Okay.
Well, and right, how about describing it as um someone understanding the principles of hydrogeology rather than trying to figure out uh how they're labeled?
Oh, that's interesting.
That that eliminate, I mean, there might be a lot of people who really are experts in hydrogeology, other than someone who has this particular certificate.
That's, that's a great idea. And so just since we're on this section, I'll just sort of point out the way it was written prior, um, there was a mention of water quality and Jeff sort of asked, you know, what kind of pollution to the water would there be? And what I had said with this report is that we're going to presume that if you, if you have any kind of major installation, it's going to change the water flow, the water volume. Um, and so it's not intended for this report to be killing a project, but more to giving the data to the planning board about um, what will change and to what extent will change in terms of the water volume, the storage, the drinking well discharge, uh recharge. And then Donna had suggested that because this is, you know, we're requiring it, it could be really expensive and so to put some parameters on it. And she suggested, you know, within four hundred feet of the property lines, which is something that we have in another section, which is the only measurement that really sort of surfaces in in state water regulations. It's about, it's about public drinking water. So it's not, it's not a direct correlation, but silly reference. So that's where this blue change comes from. Um, if that makes sense to everybody. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk down and then walk back up since I'm sort of bottom here. Uh, actually, let me go back to the top. It's easy, it'll get more confusing if I don't. Um, do, 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 sorry for making people nauseous. Uh, I don't think there's anything up there. Nope, okay. Do, do, did that? So this was about noise mitigation. Jeff had made this except, the suggestion that we put in something the exception of an emergency that would affect affect public safety or the integrity installation. So that, you know, something's got to happen because there's an emergency, you're allowed to make noise, basically. Um, that seems like a no brainer. Um, do, do, do. This is what we talked about earlier. Um, Donna just suggested, you know, they, they don't necessarily have to do a abbreviated notice of resource delineation unless it's applicable. So just adding that phrase there, uh, there might not be wet ones, so it wouldn't matter. Um, and then, so here are two things with the energy storage that Donna and Jeff's and I sort of worked on. So, you know, there was this provision about not releasing noxious gases in case of fire. And Jeff made the point that we can't require them not to, because if there's a fire, who knows what's going to happen? And so really shifting the orientation for both seven and eight to the design. So the idea is that the energy storage will be designed so that in the instance of fire, noxious gases um will be contained or filtered um to the maximum extent practicable, mitigating direct venting. So it's not that they can guarantee that it won't happen, but that when they come before us and they're designing it, that it's designed with that intent um to minimize and mitigate. Um, and then in a similar vein with the contaminated water, just to remind everybody, you know, with the lithium ion battery storage units, um, the way they deal with them if they're on fire is you can't put them out, but you can reduce the heat and the thermal runaway by flooding them with water. So if you flood them with water, it then would go into the ground. And so originally I had put something in there about impervious water containment. And Jeff made a very good point. Um, and so rather than us design their solution, we're basically saying, we want you to design something so that you, it's prevented to the maximum extent practicable. And they can come up with their solution. They can present to the planning board. We understand you don't want contaminated water filtering into the soil. And this is how we're planning to deal with it, as opposed to actually offering the solution. So do those two make sense to people? Do people have questions about that? Okay. Uh, let's see. So the historic notification part, we went through a bunch of this process. Um, it's a little long to explain, but the the high points are um, there's a pre-submission document, which Donna had suggested, I think, earlier. So before they submit a special permit application, they have to do certain things. And one of them, just like now, they have to notice. But we made what they're noticing about more specific um in terms of the content. And then the discussion is, we identified where they shall be sent and made that more specific as well. So you see at the bottom is a long list of tribes. And the rationale that Jeff and Donna pointed out is that if an applicant is coming forward, they need to know where to send it. And one can make an argument, they can do some research, but it's, it could be seen as an unreasonable burden to say, you have to do this and you have to figure out who to send it to. So the agreement was, if we came up with a long, inclusive list that we felt comfortable with, that that would give the direction and guidance to the applicant that was necessary and make it not be an undue burden. Um, is that a correct statement, Jeff?
Yep.
Yeah.
Although, although I will, I will.
Supposed to do. Yep.
Yeah, so someone else is saying something, but I missed it.
I think it was Deacon.
I wasn't, I, it wasn't me. It was me, I'm sorry.
What are you gonna say, Steve?
No, 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 go ahead. I I stepped on Jeff, un- unfortunately.
Okay. Well, he's not hurt. Uh, and then the other part is, you know, we had a whole conversation. Um, in, well, it used to be that they would have to sort of identify what mitigation, you know, what was, what was there, what was possible mitigation. And there's a thing called a cultural resources survey, which basically does that. It's just giving it a name and specifying what's in the, what's in the report. So when they come to us, pre special permit application, there's specific data that we're looking for. And now it's very clear what that is. And it's based on this pre-existing concept of a cultural resources survey. Um, and and then the only other thing I would point out here. Um, so we had this, there was this long report that the historic commission gave to us last year outlining, you know, who can get reports or whatever. And this paragraph basically summarizes that a little bit. So I'm trying to make it short and to the point, but basically saying where the reports that come out of this process go, who gets to see it. Um, so that's that. Um, we're almost through the blue, I'm pretty sure. Uh, did the water. Um, Robert, thank you for that suggestion. Um, oh, and then the last thing with the historical thing is there are things out there called either cultural resource management plans or historic property management plans. They both are sort of terms of art that exist in historic preservation. And so if it looks like it's appropriate for the site, uh, one of these plans would be written by a professional and submitted. And that would basically encapsulate um the information about historic resources, the evaluation, alternatives and modifications. So it's basically saying, this is what we would expect if if that is an issue. Um, and then the last thing Donna pointed out, um, we weren't really crisp in terms of talking about discontinued operations. And so she just suggested we label this discontinued operations and just added removal um as a thing. And that's, that's the totality of it. So um, I think you've seen it all at this point. Uh, I can stop sharing, I think, somewhere, somehow. Um, let's see. Um, yeah. It's frustrating, hold on. Uh, stop share, here we go. Okay. So if it makes sense, I think what I had told Jeff is I'm trying to shrink the things that we have to discuss, because it's obviously a long bylaw. I, it feels like there's nothing that's in major disagreement at this point that's outstanding. The only thing we have to look at is the critical natural landscape and tighten up that concept about the waiver. Um, but short of that, I think what I'm hearing is everyone's okay, having seen it at this point two times. And so, you know, and just, I think for Jeff's, Jeff Weston's sake, Jeff, once we decide, so presumably in September, we'll look at it, we'll say, okay, that language for that section is fine. We'll give the whole thing a blessing. And at that point, we will say, well, we're willing to send it to the select board. The select board looks at it. They don't do an up or down, really. Um, they just have to see it before we have a public hearing, but we tell them we want it on the warrant. And then we would schedule a hearing. So I think the only thing standing between us and the select board right now is a September meeting where we look at that one section about the the waiver for demonstrated cause. That makes sense? Did I read the room correctly?
Although I did have some, I did have some non-substantive issues that are.
Like commas and spaces and stuff?
Stuff as trivial as that, yes.
Those are important, Deacon, I know.
I know, but I don't want to, but I don't want to burden the meeting with them.
Right.
Yeah, send them to.
Good idea, good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, always welcome that. And I'll just say, in your defense, you know, our current bylaw in that section about poor habitat and critical natural landscape, we had an issue about commas and semicolons that made it very unclear. So it actually doesn't matter.
I've been, I've been on this for years.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, the 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 whole bylaw, I I was never happy with the way I originally drafted it. And and we rejiggered it. So it it it's in, it's in, it's better formatted, better ordered. Um, so.
Well, it's been good teamwork, Jeff.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. Carrie, you're raising your hand so politely.
Yes, I just wanted to um, remind us, we tried doing public comment earlier, but I think we got cut off from something else. So I just wanted to make sure that there is still time for public comment, if anyone had anything.
Cool. Well, I, before I move to that, I just wanted to thank you all for your patience with this. Um, I think it's setting up being a good product and it's having the input and the active discussion is really appreciated.
Well, um, I I didn't think anybody wanted to make public comment. I didn't think I cut anybody off, but but I'm happy to take any more, any public comment now.
Sharon's had her hand up.
Hey, guys, I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. You guys have done such an incredible, careful, thoughtful, broad, but focused job on this. And it blows my mind and I just feel so appreciative. So that's all.
Glad we were able to get you everything.
Yeah. We should take that and put it on our website, just that little word.
Okay, uh, so, so I mean, unless somebody wants to say other stuff, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, I'd like to see how long we can keep Jeff on the, on the conference call, keep him from going on vacation.
You need to tell me that there is no unanticipated business?
I want to thank Nathan for hanging tough through that whole conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Nathan.
I'd agree.
You know, I mean, it's, it's only quarter after eight. You know, I I I just want to, I want to know that I uh, I did do some work on the uh, eleven eighteen or eleven eight, whatever it is, minutes. Um, that uh, recording is three hours long. You know?
Well, thank you, thank you, Nathan.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
If anyone's gonna do a good job, I'm sure it would have been you.
Yeah, it would be great. I'm, I'm, I'm still looking for a motion now that.
So moved, so moved.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure, I'm not sure here.
Carrie will figure it out.
Okay, we'll go with that. Um, I'll, I'll call, I'll call.
We need, we need discussion. Don't we?
Um, I'm, we're open. Are, please talk, Steve.
No, that's all. I just wanted you to make sure you opened an opportunity for if there was any discussion about meeting.
I tried to, I tried.
All right.
So I'll, now that there, there appears to be no discussion, I'll call the roll.
Thank you.
Michael.
Hi.
Jeff.
He froze again.
In this great moment, he froze.
Really?
Yeah. Hi. Hi.
Okay, Nathan. Hi. Jeff.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Robert.
Hi.
I'm an I, did I miss anybody? Excellent. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank. All right, have fun. Bye bye.
Good night.